Clerk to make sure that Love the Square, Amanda Stites, gets this. Whereas the government of Harrisonville, Missouri celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States. Are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from the years 2000 to 2018. And whereas small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. 62% of US small businesses reported that they need to seek consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020. In order to stay in business. 65% of US small business owners said it would be most helpful to their businesses to have their regulars return. And start making purchases again. And three quarters of US consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree. That shopping at small independently owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday. Agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas 95% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday. Reported the day makes them want to shop or eat at small independently owned businesses all year long. Not just during the holiday season. And whereas Harrisonville, Missouri supports our local businesses. That create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country. Have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore I Judy Bowman, Mayor of Harrisonville, Missouri. Do proclaim November 28th, 2020 as Small Business Saturday. And urge the residents of our community and communities across the country. To support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. I just want to say a thank you to Love the Square for their work. In promoting small businesses in our community. And encourage our residents to shop all the time at small independently owned businesses. So thank you very much and Daniel, if you'll see that Amanda and Love the Square get that proclamation, I'd appreciate that.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you. Moving on, another ceremonial matter. This one amazes me. Mr. Rodney Jacobs is celebrating 45 years with our city. I'm going to show you the proclamation that he's going to receive. It'll be framed by the time he receives it. But you know Rodney is the go-to person. He's the supervisor of the street department. But he knows a whole lot more than just streets. And for so many of us, both elected officials as well as. People who are employed by the city and folks who live in this community. All look up to Rodney as the go-to person. One of the foundational blocks of our city. So Rodney, I know that you're on here somewhere. I just want to take the time to on behalf of the board, on behalf of all the citizens that you serve. To say thank you so much. I know we'll have a party later on in your honor. But just wanted to commend you and acknowledge those 45 years that you've given to your community. Thank you very, very much.
Well, I appreciate that. I appreciate what the city has done for me all my life and I enjoy the people. That's the best part about the whole thing. So service is a great part. Thank you very much.
Thank you Rodney. Appreciate that. All right, we'll move on then. Public participation, Mr. Ratliff, did you have any agenda request forms submitted this week by the public?
No ma'am, we have not.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the minutes and at this point I would ask you to please silence your cell phones if you have not already done so. The minutes of the regular meeting, the Board of Alderman from November 2nd, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Turner. To approve the minutes of the regular meeting for November 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, we will say that those minutes are approved. And while moving on then to the minutes of the work session of the Board of Alderman, November 2nd, I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Zaring. To approve the minutes of the work session for November 2nd. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, those minutes will stand approved for November 2nd, 2020. Moving on to our agenda items, Council Bill 79.
Council Bill.
You're on mute, Alex.
I thought I clicked it. I think my thumb hit the space bar. Let's try that again.
That's okay. Go ahead, Council Bill 79.
A resolution of the Board of Alderman of the City of Harrisonville, authorizing the city administrator to enter into a development agreement with Aldi Incorporated regarding the construction and costs of widening Westchester Avenue at Mechanic Street and adding a left turn lane.
Thank you. Mr. Crowe, is this you?
It is. And can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
When we approved the final plat, consolidating some of the lots for, to allow for the Aldi store. We talked about the congestion at Westchester and Mechanic Street. And what we call a Band-Aid approach. We came up with, the engineers came up with. And if we could only, if we would only widen. Westchester four feet, we could add an additional lane in, an additional turn lane in there. The impact. The engineers tell us with Aldi going in. Most of the day, most of the day you won't notice a difference. But you will notice a difference during the peak hour of 4:30 to 5:30 at night. And with this additional turn lane. The good news is the right hand, the right turns. Will decrease from 25 seconds to 15 seconds or the waiting time for that. But the left-hand turn will increase from 25 to 70 seconds. And if we don't add this turn lane, it will be worse. But that'll just be for an hour a day. And we think with the additional turn lane. It's a Band-Aid to get us through until we can do the permanent solution which. Ted Martin has done a preliminary. Design of it. It's about a $3 million project and. You know, it probably won't happen until there's a statewide funding program. But this development agreement. Puts into, puts into writing what we had agreed to when the plat was approved is that. We would split the 50/50 with Aldi, the cost of the widening. And whereas a year ago, we'd estimated our half would be 15 grand. Now, newer, more recent numbers have come in and it'll be 20 grand. So what the agreement says is that we'll pay 50% of the actual cost up to $20,000. Be happy to answer any questions.
So what's the long-term plan?
A full intersection with left, left turn lanes. You know, right turn lanes and I'm not sure if it might be double left, double rights. I just don't recall the design, but it would be a new, a full new intersection. At that location.
Because of the, of the exit coming off of the highway?
Well, it's a combination of that and just the amount of traffic that's on there. This does, the problems as you know, predate Aldi. I mean, they exist there now. But it's just a combination of you've got Park Street, Westchester coming into Mechanic Street. You also have the on-off ramps for the interstate and. You know, it creates some congestion particularly in the morning and in the evening.
Other questions for Mr. Crowe?
Yeah, so with the long-term approach to it, I'm assuming full-blown intersection, we're talking like. Stoplight, all of that stuff at that intersection then, correct?
Yes.
Wouldn't that cause more of a congestion with people coming off of? The highway there? That would be my concern. Is there any other approach going into there that we would be able to look at other than putting a stoplight there at that intersection?
Well, what will help the situation is turn lanes and. You know, right, I mean, what we're estimating for left-hand turns out of Westchester in the, in the evening. Is going up from about 25 seconds right now to a wait time of about 70 seconds. I think it would just manage it better. The, with the signalization on the turn lanes. Than what you have now and what you will have at full development.
And for clarification, this council bill is just to say that we're going to cost share no more than $20,000 for a temporary. A fix for this intersection. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes ma'am, this would be, this would be temporary. The long-term, as Roger pointed out before, is well over 3 million. And so we would have to get some type of state funding. To be able to do the long-term project. And it would be more than just turn signals. It would be turning lanes, widening of roadways through there. I know that Alderman Zaring talked about coming off of that caused a bigger issue. It won't. If we do the entire project where there's widening of roadways and turn lanes in through that whole area.
Mayor?
Yes, Alderman Davidson.
Question, Roger, have you all given any consideration to the possibility of making a right-only turn coming out of Westchester requiring everyone to go right? That would alleviate some of the problem, people pulling up there and trying to turn left in the 70 seconds. I know it's not the best case scenario, but temporarily it may solve accidents and injuries and, and like.
You know, I, I wasn't privy, privy, excuse me, to any discussions. Of having a right-only. I don't think it was considered by the traffic engineers. I know staff did not bring it up.
Good. Thank you.
But it's certainly worth mentioning. But again, this, this council bill is just about the cost share, so. Good discussion, board. Any other questions for Mr. Crowe or Mr. Ratliff? I'd entertain a motion then.
We need to, we would have to make a motion to suspend and go to the second. Is that correct?
This is a resolution. This is a resolution. So we just need a simple motion.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, didn't catch the second. Raise your hand if you were the second. Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Turner. Roll call please.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Zaring?
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Miller?
You're muted, Alderman Miller.
And Alderman Davidson?
Aye.
Thank you. Council Bill 79 is approved and becomes Resolution 043. The public hearing. Mr. Crowe, is this you also?
No, it's Jim Clark.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, Mayor and Board.
Good evening.
As you mentioned, this is a public hearing, so. I guess you probably need to open the public hearing and then I'll do the presentation and then we can close the public hearing.
All right, I will open the public hearing then if there's anyone on the call that would like to speak. About the CDBG demolition grant for the old power, water, and electric building. You may speak now. Hearing no one, I will now close the public hearing and Mr. Clark, you may proceed.
Excellent. As you saw in your staff report, we are pursuing a CDBG grant application for. The demolition of the old water and electric building the city owns. And on the key issues, I've expressed the current risk and liability. Of the vacant city-owned property, the challenge that we have with effectively securing. And the property from trespassing and unauthorized access. There was a. Phase one and phase two environmental site assessment conducted and based on the findings in the phase two. Of the environmental site assessment needs to be a consideration. Maximum grant amount, if approved for this particular grant program is $300,000. And depending on the applications that have been received and the competitiveness of those applications in this funding cycle. The maximum amount may not be approved. Lesser funding might be approved and the grant application might even be denied. Keep in mind, if you're not aware, we've had two informal courtesy estimates done on what the demolition cost might be. And the estimated cost on average is around $350,000. Plus I've added a 10% contingency. And so the informal project cost estimate is around $385,000. There is a required 20% match the city has to come up with and provide. If we are approved for any of the grant funding amount. So additionally. If the project total cost does become. Or does exceed $360,000, which would be the maximum approval of 300 plus the city's $60,000 match. The city would also be required to cover the additional portion exceeding the $360,000. So we could end up having to come up with cost coverage exceeding the $60,000 of the 20% match. So one of the requirements of this program. Is to complete during the public hearing, the document before you, displayed before you, which is the Community Needs Assessment. It has several different categories and a few questions regarding the facilities that. Contribute to benefit of the entire community. So what we'll need to do is go through each line item. And come to a determination as to whether or not, obviously if it doesn't exist, we will know that, but if it's a good facility condition or. Function of benefit, if you will, or fair or poor. So we'll just go through and try to get some comments from public if anyone is in attendance or from the board as well. So we can document those for our grant application. So the first item is under public works infrastructure. We have the water system. Any comments on the city's current water system with respect to the condition of it serving the citizens?
Do you mean in that structure?
No, no, these would be facilities that serve the citizens on the entire city basis. So I apologize for the confusion.
Existing, existing structures.
So in essence, the goal of this particular piece here is at the end of it. We're going to have to come up with five top priorities that the community sees as needs. And. In that process, we can kind of determine based on the comments and the feedback. As to what might be considered the top five needs in the community at this time. So just holistically, the city's water system, do we consider that to be good, fair, poor?
I think it's good. The board feel free.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Okay, we'll move on to the sanitary sewer system. Fair, good, poor?
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes, Alderman.
As I look at this, because I've been really interested in this project for some time. I don't quite understand. The way this is presented where it says water system, sanitary sewer system, et cetera. And are you telling me that we are judging the city's ability to provide these things? And if so, what does that have to do with? Destroy or demolishing the old building?
Well, and I, I posed the same question to the CDBG representative. Because I didn't quite see the correlation myself. And the response was in essence. To be considered eligible, it must generally. It must be generally in the top five needs of the community based on the needs assessment. So we're going through this entire needs assessment for the community. As to what facilities we currently have in place, what functions we have in place to best serve the citizens. And if you've had a chance to go through the needs assessment document. It goes into public services with respect to fire and ambulance, goes into community facilities. With respect to community center, hospitals, et cetera, goes into housing. And also goes into education. So we're trying to understand and keep in mind that. They receive applications for these grants, including this particular grant from all across the state. So they're trying to have some sort of a consistent capacity to assess and to. Rank the applications that come in. So this is designed for all communities to be able to respond so that they can have some consistent evaluation process. When they do determine who they do and don't fund on their request. So that's my understanding of it.
Okay, so they're looking to see. Our positive attributes in the city. And judging by what we have. They're, they're judging that to decide. If they want to help us destroy that building. I know I'm blubbering here, but this is.
No, no, I had the same confusion. Because to me, if you're doing a grant application requesting infrastructure. It would make more sense to me, the way this community needs assessment is presented versus reading of a dangerous building. I didn't quite get the correlation myself, but. The explanation to me was they're looking at this, the community's overall needs. And if they place as a priority, the removal of a dangerous building. As maybe one of their top five priority needs. Based on what they have to offer and what they can provide to the citizens. Then you might have a stronger case for getting approval for. Whole or part of your request. For the demolition. The other, the other item they've mentioned is that. In our case, we're only requesting one building be demolished. What they prefer to see is multiple buildings being demolished simultaneously through the grant funding. And communities that can do that typically might have a higher score in their application. So. While this is a priority for our community. In the eyes of Community Development Block Grant. And the entire state applications coming in. I'm not confident that we'll have the strongest case compared to maybe other communities' application requests.
Okay, thank you. That really helps.
Okay, and like I say, it confused me as well, this process for this particular grant application.
Thanks for asking Judy, because I was thinking the same thing.
All right, how do we want to rate our sanitary sewer system?
I think it's probably good as well, isn't it?
I think so.
Okay. Our stormwater drainage? I have a comment there. I would say it's poor.
Say fair or poor on that.
Yes, I would almost be inclined to lean toward poor. But I'll, I'll listen to the board.
I could go with that.
Okay. And streets, bridges, and sidewalks?
I'm going to say streets are good, majority of them. I wouldn't, I wouldn't say they're fair.
I would have to agree. We do have some bridges and underpasses that need some help, but I think overall it's probably good.
Well, bridges and streets are separate, so streets we could say were good. I think most of you are agreeing with that. You know, I don't know, Mr. Clark, does that bridge, does that railroad bridge over commercial? Apply to this particular factor?
Although vehicles don't pass on that bridge. The condition of the bridge, I think, has been a concern to the community in years past. I don't think the rail company has addressed it to probably our comfort and preference. So. There might be some concerning consideration there, in my mind anyway.
Would it be fair to rate that as poor?
I don't know enough about rail bridges, but I certainly wouldn't say be of a fair.
Is Rodney Jacobs still on this call? I guess not.
Yes, Mayor, I'm right here.
Okay. Rodney, we've had conversations about the condition of that bridge. Would you rate it, rank it fair or poor?
The railroad says it's fair. They've inspected. They say they inspect it every year.
What do you say?
About an engineer, I have no idea. They told, I was told that they would inspect their own bridges. It didn't need my help.
Has Mr. Brooks seen that bridge?
No, he has not.
Okay. All right, well then if the railroad says it's fair, I guess we have to say it's fair. And sidewalks?
I think that's again a Rodney question. I mean, I think the majority of our sidewalks are in good shape, but I know we have some that need some work.
Yeah.
What do you think Rodney?
Rodney, would you rate our sidewalks as good or fair?
Our sidewalks would be fair.
Okay. Thank you. And then moving down to public services. Fire protection, police protection, code enforcement, healthcare, emergency services, and parking. Anybody just jump in here?
I think we're good on all of that. The only concern I think is parking around the square is. Always a challenge, but I mean, if we're rating on how the services are right now. I don't know if we have any major concerns with any of those, do we?
Well, I could think of, I'd probably put good for all of them and put fair for code enforcement.
Okay. Anybody else have other thoughts?
I would concur with David. I think all of them will accept code enforcement.
Okay. All right.
Obviously Chris.
Community facilities, community center, senior citizen center. Sheltered workshop, hospital, infant daycare, mental health counseling. Youth center, drug abuse, and other prevention, or crime prevention programs. I think that's right. Good for the community center. Senior Citizen Center.
I'd go with fair on Senior Citizen Center.
Okay.
Issues about the way the original contract was written. And keeping it clean. There's no, you know, there could be a lot of improvement there.
Okay, the sheltered workshop?
Do we consider that casco?
Yes.
That's a good one.
Good.
Hospital's good.
Agree.
Infant daycare doesn't really exist, does it?
I mean, we have a lot of daycares, but I don't know that we could technically rate those.
I think we have to say that that doesn't exist. Infant daycare. Mental health counseling services like pathways and
I'm thinking fair on that one.
I agree.
We don't have a teen youth center.
Right.
What is that one that's in the old Allen Bank? What's that?
It's called the vault. That's one of the church programs.
Okay.
Drug abuse prevention.
I don't know that we have that, do we?
No. And then crime prevention. Oops, sorry. Somebody jumped in.
Wouldn't that be there? Does, does the police department still provide some of that?
Dare is, is, yes, they do. And dare is an education program to fifth graders in elementary school.
Right, so we do have a little bit there anyway. That's, that's a really good program. It just doesn't cover very many kids, so.
Right. And it is very narrow focused, too.
Yeah, but it is drug abuse prevention, so.
What about crime prevention?
We have Joshua's house still. It's a rehabilitation house after by
Yes, yes. Well, I would rate for drug, for, what is it, drug abuse? If you want to rate it poor, because we don't have much, I, I'm good, whatever the board feels like. Oh, thank you, Mr. Clark. That helps.
Yeah, I would have to say poor because I don't feel like we have the adequate amount that we need.
Okay, we'll change that then. And then crime prevention?
What would that be different from the police?
Is Chief Over on here? Will you help us with this one?
Crime prevention program is gonna be like neighborhood watch programs, similar programs to that, which at this time, we don't have, but we're working towards.
Okay, so it doesn't exist?
I think SEPTED would be another one, or working with the landlords to come up with security programs and such like that.
Okay.
I, I think it'd be non-existent at this time.
Okay, thank you. Housing, residential rehab, housing for the disabled, single-family housing. Let's start with residential rehab, first of all.
That's what I would kind of consider the Joshua House, wouldn't we?
Well, but that's talking, this is, that's really talking housing. I was thinking number of people flipping houses.
Right, I think that's what this would mean.
We have several people in town that do buy the older homes and rehab them and
Yes, we do.
I would probably give that a fair. I don't know that I would give it a good.
Everybody agree?
I'd concur.
Okay, housing for the disabled. I don't know that that exists. Single-family housing, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Group homes? Because there are several group homes in town.
That's what I was thinking, too.
That's true, that's true.
I'd have to rate that poor then if we're going there.
Okay. Single-family housing. We know we don't have enough of it.
Fair?
I would lean fair to poor.
Okay. Who wants to go fair, fair or poor? What do you say?
I'd go poor.
Okay. Affordable rental housing.
Poor.
Okay, poor. Land-based lead-based paint abatement.
I don't think we have anything for that, do we?
Okay, energy efficient improvements.
We have anything for that.
Homeownership assistance.
Nothing I'm aware of as far as the city is concerned.
And senior housing.
I think we have pretty good senior housing.
I think fair.
It's fair before poor.
You want to go fair or poor?
I would say fair.
I'd go fair.
All right.
How much senior housing do we have for the upper income?
Really none.
Right, so really our senior housing is more for low income.
Right, subsidized senior housing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna vote poor.
Okay. So what's the majority of the board want to do on this one? Fair or poor on senior housing?
I could go poor, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Our education profiles, preschools.
Good.
Good.
Public schools.
Good.
Vocational schools.
Very good.
Community colleges, doesn't exist. Universities, doesn't exist. Continuing education.
We could technically consider CCC in there on some of that, but not necessarily all of it.
Yeah.
Don't we have them under vocational schools? Number three.
Same thing.
Yeah.
Yep. Continuing education.
I think that doesn't exist.
Doesn't that exist through the CCC though, Marcy?
Well, it does, but they don't, to me, continuing education to me would be like night classes.
Yeah, for adults.
Those type of, I mean, it does have a nursing program. But that's part of the vocational schools program. So I guess you could look at it both ways.
Don't we have an MU extension just off the square?
I don't know that that's necessarily continuing education, though, is it?
No.
More for H.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's leave it as it doesn't exist.
All right, number seven, employer-based skills training.
That exists as well.
I don't think it exists now. I know we're working toward that, but I don't think it exists now. Number eight, cooperative school business partnerships. Again, we don't have that now. Entrepreneurship training. I would have to say we don't have that now unless somebody has other opinions or thoughts.
I would have to agree with that.
Okay, economic development, job creation.
Working really hard on it.
Yes.
Do we, is it even existent right now, though, as far as job, specifically job creation?
Mr. Clark, can you help us here?
Because it depends on how you define it. Tangibly, I don't think we could suggest that there have been actual jobs created, say, in the last 12 months to, to any significant degree.
So it doesn't exist?
Would you say poor then?
Like I said, it depends on how you define that. And I'm not sure what their intent is with it.
Right.
Quite honestly, either, so. Because I wouldn't suggest there haven't been any jobs created in the last 12 months, but
Right.
nothing of significant tangible capacity.
I, I would go, or I think on that, when you're talking job creation, and of course with COVID and everything that's gone down last 12 months, it's going to be skewed anyways.
Yes.
But I think as we get down and identify the five priority needs, and we're talking economic development, which economic development had been non-existent for some time, I think, in the, in the city. But I would say, yeah, something poor. I could see us looking at this as some sort of a prioritization, probably.
Okay. So are you good with leaving it as poor then?
I am.
Okay. And Board, feel free, if anybody else has opinions, feel free to jump in here. All right, number two, startup business assistance.
We have some good programs, but
But what do we have in place, Matt?
All right, well, I guess not startup, but I mean, we have a lot of tools that we offer to come here, I mean, like with Walmart, you know, the chapter 100 and stuff like that.
I'd like to hear Mr. Clark's opinion on this.
Yes, I would say probably fair to good. It kind of depends, and when I say fair is because there are resources on the city website for folks looking to start up a new business. But I'd say it'd be good if someone were referred to me or came directly to me to get business assistance. I could provide, provide much more personal assistance, guidance, direction. I could also filter and understand to assess what they're trying to achieve to guide them more effectively. But if someone is just to go to the city website and obtain resources, and even then, if they're somewhat astute at that type of research and understanding what it is they're wanting to achieve, the resources out there might be considered good for certain individuals. So it's kind of hard to say. Best thing would be to pull folks that I've assisted or folks that maybe have used the website. I wouldn't say it's non-existent. I really wouldn't say it's poor. It's between fair and good if I had to assess it.
So it sounds to me like that the assistance is there, but somehow we have to get the information to the public that it is there, how to assess it and, and exactly what is available.
I'd say that's probably an accurate assessment.
So Alderman Reese, how would you rank it? Is fair? Would you agree? You're on mute. Alderman Reese?
I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay.
I would assess it as fair, yes.
Okay, thank you. Employment training?
Mr. Ratliff needs to look at that one.
But that would be employment training beyond high school.
I was thinking about city employees. You're right.
It's non-existent, isn't it, really? I mean,
That's
again, when you're looking at economic development, I don't know.
I might suggest, depending on if you're interpreting it as access to employment training programs, which we do have, and I can facilitate that, versus is the city or some city arm actively providing those programs? So it kind of depends on how that's interpreted.
I hope when you submit this that you will communicate that the form is not really helpful. It doesn't give us enough information as to what they're looking for. So
I can certainly do that.
So it's really not non-existent then, so we need to rank it either as fair or poor? Or is that, or fair or good? Is that what you're saying?
I would think fair or good.
Okay.
I'm good with fair. I mean, at the end of the day, we're going to prioritize, if they can all be fair, we're just going to put five priorities what we're looking at for the city, so.
Well, and then just to clarify and expand on the employment training, what we're attempting to do with MCC would certainly put that in a good, in a strong category versus right now, we're kind of reaching out, trying to pull resources in versus having a direct access to a resource. So I'd say for, fair is probably appropriate at this time.
Yeah. These would all be different if MCC were here at the, at the time. Other economic development needs? I don't even know what they mean.
I would suggest select infrastructure in our situation. One, we are addressing with the south sewer extension. The other one would be Commercial Street extension. I'd say some of the road infrastructure out by the Warner property and Church and Dwight, et cetera, is certainly in need, not just the access from Commercial Street, but the actual road infrastructure. So I would say I'd say fair, because we do have utilities in the area, but I wouldn't suggest that they're all lined out effectively for project leads that we receive.
Okay.
I wouldn't consider them good, but I wouldn't consider them poor. I'd say fair.
I think that's a fair assessment. All right, the top five priority needs list in order of importance and intention to address.
And if I may speak for just one second on that.
Certainly.
In my conversation and communications with the Community Development Block Grant Representative, I interpret and understood the intent of this to identify what your, your priorities are and your needs are. And based on what the Board's direction is with the vacant, blighted and abandoned structures in the community, and based on what the citizens apparent desire for addressing those appears to be, that our pursuit of this grant application for demolition of a dangerous building falls in line, in my mind, with certainly a top 10 priority, and then you folks can rank it where you think appropriate within the top 10, but I think it's a becoming more of a, a higher level priority than it has been in years past.
Mayor, if I may ask a question?
Yes, Alderman.
Jim, now, obviously, our storms are, excuse me, storm drainage is, is a significant issue, but we already addressed that, so that would be one of my top priorities. But since we've already addressed that, do do issue priorities that we've already addressed go in this list?
I would think so. I mean, we just kind of ranked how the present condition is of those different items in the earlier part of this form. And I, my understanding is they're now asking us to list our top five priority needs.
Okay, so even though we've already addressed that.
Mr. Clark, can you help us here?
If I'm understanding the, the question, if it's something we've already addressed, so the need isn't as substantial or significant or does no longer exist, I wouldn't include it in this list because this list is for the present and future needs, is my understanding. And as you look at item G, it says identify the community's top five priority needs in this assessment. And if you already cure the need, then you don't have that need any longer currently. It may pop again in the future, but currently, we're trying to assess the needs we have presently.
Well, it's not, I'm not necessarily saying it's solved because it hasn't been yet, but we're in the process of solving it with the retention pond and certain other things that we were doing to ensure hopefully the flooding won't occur again. That's kind of, that's what I'm, that's what I'm going with.
Then I would suggest possibly that prioritize items that aren't currently being addressed or you don't have capacity to address versus those that you have some capacity and are currently addressing. Would be how I interpret this particular document and the intent of it.
I, I would almost put down, you know, one of our priorities is correcting some of the blighted areas in the city, which this would be one of them. That way it goes up higher on our list and we have a better chance of getting those.
Think that's a good point.
I, I would agree with that, Madam Mayor, Board. I'd also like to say, I would still like to see the stormwater in the top five, though. I know we've addressed several of the issues, but I think we're just starting to scratch the surface on what needs to be done stormwater-wise. I think we still have a lot more to go there. I would like it anyways to stay in the top five, for sure.
I think so. Handling blighted and dangerous properties. Stormwater and flooding issues.
And just to comment, if you, if we scroll up to this form and you look at where you've identified fair and poor, that might give you some indication as to maybe what that might give you some indication as to maybe what priorities could or should be versus those that are already good. And if you'll notice on their codes enforcement, that was listed as fair to begin with. So trying to address all those with dangerous and blighted structures, I think is very appropriate in the alignment on the priorities.
I think one of the things too that we could maybe put on here, and maybe I'm wrong, but our need for economic development, because that addresses so many more of our, that addresses our, our population. It addresses our, you know, our.
School enrollment.
So economic development to me would be one of our top priorities.
We talked about the job creation and the things that would be brought to us if we had community college here. And we don't at the present time. So would we want to list things like continuing education, job creation, you know, keeping our kids here, not having kids having to go away for college, offering technical vocational training here. I'm just kind of rambling too, but I know that's a piece that we need that we, we say we're working on while we're talking with MCC, but that's just still.
I definitely think the higher education, continuing education.
I agree. That'll help with a lot of other things, job creation, other things in our city, too.
Would you include technical education in there? Jim, in addition to vocational education, make a technical education too for, for students that don't want to embark on a four-year college education. And then number five?
One of the things we've not looked at too, too much is and if you look at the list up above there, it, it shows that we are concerned about rental housing, about single-family housing, and we've talked about that at some length in the last few years about how we don't have enough housing for the people that come in. So I think that that's probably a pretty good problem there. I think you all, you all met with, with some of the the contractors and developers and that's a good start, but I think that's a real problem.
And maybe that would be mixed housing, single-family housing, but mixed housing at different, different levels.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
In general, yeah.
Affordable, right, right. This has been work.
I would include affordable in front of that.
And that's what I meant by mixed housing, but that's fine. Go ahead and add affordable housing in there. Describe the proposed project as it relates to the top five priorities. Okay, Mr. Clark, I think you can complete this based on, you know, the fact that it's been a dangerous building for a number of years. We've had environmental assessments that have told us, you know, the hazardous materials that are present, the environmental liability.
And it's going to open up for possible development in that area there.
Well, we wouldn't be able to develop on that particular land because of the environmental concerns. But we would be eliminating a dangerous building where we now have homeless people that are going in and living and setting fires. And the city has been challenged for years in, in securing that building. And we know it's a potential liability on us.
And I think just getting rid of it is going to make a huge improvement just on site value.
True.
Are we talking about the entire, the entire building there or just, isn't that two buildings kind of put together there?
It is two buildings and we're talking about the old water and electric building. That's the building on Lexington, not the one on Independence.
Okay.
But you're right, you know, we've been in there, Alderman. We know with the condition of, of that building, yes.
It was scary.
Yes, yes.
Could we make that a parking lot? I mean, or something?
We can. I believe the environmental attorney said, you know, we just needed to bring it down, perhaps bury it and, and then cover it with something, but it, because it has all the environmental concerns, we couldn't do too much with it. But you're right, yes.
I was just thinking for the Fourth of July, the parks, we always run out of parking if, you know.
That's right, that's right. Okay, item. What is item I? If the proposed project does not appear in the top five community priorities, provide an explanation. But it does, right?
Correct.
Number one, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Is that the end of the form, Mr. Clark?
Correct, Mayor, it is.
Okay. Do you need anything else from the Board on this item?
Not to my knowledge at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clark. We'll move on to Council Bill seventy-five. Thank you, Board. That was great discussion and great input. I appreciate that. Council Bill seventy-five.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to approve a request from B and B Theaters to temporarily, temporarily defer past due utility payments.
All right, we talked about this the last meeting and the Board agreed it wanted to postpone it for this evening. So, Mr. Smith, I'm going to turn it over to you.
He's on mute. There you go.
I was holding down the space part, but I was in a different application looking at the agenda. Okay, so I know the Board was looking for additional information about the potential payments that B and B Theaters had, had made and what the status of their account currently was. So we added that to the end of the staff report along with a pro and con list for moving forward with an agreement of this type. At this point in time, they, we did receive a check for two thousand one hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-one cents. They did not pay the past due amounts as part of that. That left them with a balance of a hundred twelve seventy-nine, including the current bill. If, and I don't know that they made that payment as of yesterday to avoid the penalty on that amount. The ten percent, ten percent late fee would apply as of this morning. Was there a question?
For this month?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
The amount that they would owe this month, one fourteen hundred dollars?
Yes, sir.
So would that be the fourteen hundred plus the one twelve seventy-nine?
No, it was the past due amount of eight forty-three sixty-seven plus the fourteen hundred and fifty-three, and then they paid short of that, which is what left them with a balance of one twelve seventy-nine.
And Jeremy, the one twelve seventy-nine were the penalties and interest or whatever. That wasn't part of, I know it's part of the bill, don't get me wrong, but that was not part of the initial billing. That was some of the charges and penalties that they had to pay on top of what they paid. Is that correct?
It wasn't part of the past due at the time. It was part of what technically, well, it would have been the past due penalty and then cutoff fees that they would have, that they would have had applied to their account based on being on the shut off list.
So do they have, other than the current bill that is, was due probably yesterday? Or today, I guess. You don't know if that bill that was, that was due has been paid and if, and if so, how much?
The only outstanding balance on the account is the one twelve seventy-nine. It's one of those weird situations where when the, the bill, the penalties applied, they didn't pay those penalties. This happens occasionally where businesses will be late. Then they'll send us a check, but it doesn't include the penalties. And so then those penalties applied to the account and then rolled forward. So they actually paid their current due amount plus the next month's due amount, but didn't pay any of the penalties that applied in the middle there. So they covered their past due amount and the penalty, it just is, that's how I have to describe it to end up with a one twelve seventy-nine. They, they basically are short of this month's bill by a one twelve seventy-nine. Because we applied that money to the past penalties.
So they're up to date other than the ten or twelve dollars, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That's why I'm kind of confused why we're even having this discussion. So they want to break a hundred and twelve dollars into twelve-month payments?
They want to, they want to consider, have the consideration for the bill, the bills that they will have for the rest of the year. So they'll have another bill that will generate probably tomorrow for the prior month's usage and then ultimately a December bill. So there will be some bills that potentially and could add up. And I'm not familiar enough with their account to say what those bills would be, but obviously they had an eight hundred dollar bill. And then as we started getting into cooler weather, they had a fourteen hundred dollar bill. And I don't know if that has to do with more of how much they're open or how much they're not. And then we, we also provided a pro and con list as to you know, how staff use having to put forward a solution such as this to the Board. If anyone has any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Jeremy, I have one. Way I'm understanding you now, currently, they owe approximately fifteen hundred plus dollars if they did not pay the bill that was due the fifteenth, correct?
They did pay that bill. They, they just don't have the next generated bill for the, the usage that's in arrear, which we could estimate would be about fourteen hundred dollars. That would be the bill that would be due December first.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but Clint, I think one of the suggestions you made that they at least pay half of the bill or the past due, which they did, they actually went above and beyond that. I'm not sure about the conversations between the city and them, but they did pay that. And as much as it concerns me in one aspect, we told them, pay at least half and we'll consider it. And they went above and beyond that. So I think we need to look at it. I, as I said last time, I hate to set precedent. But I also hated to say something and they went above and beyond as well to show maybe good faith. I don't know. And we don't know what COVID is going to bring come December and January as well. They may be shut down again. Right. That's why I wouldn't have much of a problem doing this, you know, so long as it doesn't exceed the twenty-eight hundred dollars that they've got on deposit.
And correct me if I'm wrong, they're just asking for November and December at this point, right? January is when they started. Is that, do I remember that right from the last discussion?
Their request was to postpone their debt until the January movie season were to kick off. And so that they anticipate having a higher amount of revenue. And they wanted to spread those bills across twelve months. And while I will agree that they did pay more than we originally said you had to, to keep from being shut off, that was only after we as staff tracked them down to find the appropriate person to work through this with. Otherwise, they would have been on, they would have been shut off. This was staff doing their due diligence to try to keep businesses from being, you know, unable to, to operate. But most of the effort was on our part.
I do remember reading that there. So we really were more concerned than they were about being shut off at that point.
Okay, I have a question. I don't know, I guess my, I'm going to state the same thing I stated last time. I think by doing this, we are setting a great expectation and a great precedent. I guess my thought is at this moment, basically, there's a hundred and twelve dollars outstanding. We don't know what their next bill is going to be, nor do we know what their December bill is going to be. And I kind of think, I, I mean, at this point, are we, we're, we're, we don't know what their bills are going to be. They don't know what their bills are going to be. They may be able to open and show movies here in the next two weeks and this won't even be an issue. So my thought is, is this something that that maybe we don't even need to be discussing until next month? If, if this, I don't know. I'm, I'm really torn on this one. I mean, to me, right now, we don't have a problem with them. And they're not out of, other than the one twelve, they're not out of compliance.
I think the biggest concern from a staff perspective is, is that basically we would be offering long-term credit.
Right.
And that is just not something that the city has ever entertained and probably would not usually entertain in any way. This, the second component of that is, is what criteria do we then use to judge whether or not we would do this moving forward for other business, businesses and residential customers? This, this is something that we haven't offered to anyone up until this point. We, we went through the original COVID era where we didn't do shut offs and then ultimately we made payment arrangements with those customers. But none of those exceeded six months and for the most part, we tried to account for that in less than three months. I feel like we're treading on thin ice here. We would be setting a precedent that potentially leaves us open to plenty of other businesses coming and saying, well, why didn't I get this type of treatment or why didn't I get this this plan set forth in front of me? If I, alls I had to do was ask. And then the second component of that is, is okay, let's say we do decide to do this. What criteria would we then use to judge whether or not someone would qualify?
So if I understand right, then let's just say, we say, no, we're not going to entertain this now. It goes to the point that it's coming to where their water is going to be shut off. At that point, we work with them and not work with them for a year, but do like we've done in the past with businesses, work with them on a ninety-day to maybe a six-month plan to be able to keep their water on and pay their bill. Is that correct?
Ultimately, that would be at the discretion of the Board. I think that just the volatility of every economy right now, but specifically the movie industry where there's no guarantee that they will open in January is of concern. And if they were to go out of business, then we have to, at that point, have swallowed that debt. I think it's, there's just a significant amount of risk here. I'm not saying that we shouldn't support our local businesses, but I think a measure of caution with picking and choosing which business to support versus others may be warranted here.
Anyone else have comments?
I have a question.
Yes, Alderman.
Yeah, Jeremy, the, the deposit that they have, how much is their deposit again?
I believe it was twenty-six hundred.
The twenty-six hundred dollars is just there. So if they went for two months and didn't pay their bills, would that deposit pay those bills?
It's twenty-eight hundred. Yes, ma'am. So, but typically we'd apply a deposit when a business goes into shut off status. And then if they, then they would have an outstanding bill. And then from there, if they came in to get services set back up, they would pay the other, the rest of the outstanding amount and then ultimately have to apply a new deposit. And those deposits are usually calculated at two months' worth of bill. That's why it's, it's actually set that way. So we could actually guesstimate that their average bill is potentially running at about fourteen hundred dollars, or maybe even their highest bill is around fourteen hundred. But that would have been also set a long time ago.
Okay, thank you.
So then, right now, if they're to get shut off and reestablish service for based on two months of usage, their deposit would be lower than the twenty-eight hundred right now?
No, sir.
No?
No, we would go to, we would go and look at what the average bill is or the highest bills that we would look at. So because we're trying to protect the city and, you know, look at that two-month timeframe that we're trying to protect the rest of the utility customers from having to bear any sort of. So if their highest bill was fourteen hundred, we would take that times two and that's how we would get to the twenty eight hundred.
Okay, so it's the highest bill, not just the average of the bills?
Yes, we're, we're trying to protect the, you know, make sure that no matter what time of year it is, that that deposit is capable of covering.
Correct, okay. And summer is their peak, so that's where that fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, so the, these deposits were potentially set ten or fifteen years ago. So it's highly likely that their deposit would go up.
Go up, okay.
I, I think that the, somehow this seems even more difficult than the average thing. Because we have so few sources of entertainment for our kids and our adults who are in Harrisonville. That, that's one that, that I think that most of us hesitate to let go. And, you know, if they go out of business, I think that's just sort of a devastating thing. Not for me personally, I don't think I've been out there more than twice. But, but I know there are people that spend a lot of time there and send their children there. And so personally speaking, if there's any way we can help them and still protect the city of Harrisonville, I would certainly be for that.
Madam Mayor.
I would agree with that.
Thank you, Alderman, Alderman Milner.
I think on, as much as I hate to say it now, and they haven't given us any indication that they're planning on leaving. But I, I really hate to say it, but I'm, I'm going to have to maybe, think I'm going to agree with Jeremy on this one. I think, I think we are opening ourselves up if we do this. I mean, we know that the city is really good to work with people when push comes to shove and they give them every possible opportunity. We don't know what's coming in the next two months. We only know what is projected to be coming. I just don't know that we want to set this precedent at this time. Because like you said, there are a lot of small businesses out there in our community. And there, there may be a lot of them that come into the same thing. And, and I think the way staff handled the businesses with COVID and gave them the opportunities to pay and worked out payment plans for them. I think I would almost like to suggest that we stick with that plan moving forward.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the board?
I do have one more, Mayor. Did you
Yes, Alderman.
Staff reach out and ask them to attend the meeting tonight?
Did we ask them to attend?
Yes.
No, sir, we did not.
But you all struggled just finding them to try and come to some sort of an agreement, correct?
On the front end, yes, because they were due to be shut off. This is the first month that they had not paid their bill. Then once we jumped through several layers, we were able to hold this one. And he has all of the email to find out what the board's action was after the last meeting. I let him know that the item was tabled and that we would be taking it up again this evening. And he just asked that we update him.
So the decisions that have to be made, obviously, we don't want to see any business go out of business. We want to be careful to not establish a precedent that's going to, you know, open up additional issues for us. And I think it's important that we support our staff. So if there are no further questions or comments, I'm going to entertain a motion. Hearing no motion, I'm going to ask our city attorney, Alex Felsine, to join us in this conversation. Since this motion has died for lack of action, where does that leave us?
So, I'm trying to think whether or not it'd be a, I believe the council, the Board of Aldermen can move on without actually bringing the motion to a vote. If the council wanted to bring it to a vote, they could vote against it, of course. But the council can simply leave the motion uncalled and we can move on.
Okay, so Council Bill seventy five then will fail for lack of action. Moving on to Council Bill eighty.
Council Bill eighty, an ordinance of the Harrisonville Board of Aldermen adopting an operating budget for the city of Harrisonville, Missouri for the fiscal year January one, twenty twenty one through December thirty one, twenty twenty one.
Mr. Hart, is that you?
That would be me.
Welcome, good evening.
Thank you. So we've got for you tonight for consideration for adoption your, your twenty twenty one budget. The budget, the total budget is fifty million, six ninety six, zeros all eight, which is an unusually high number, only because of two items that are new to this budget. One's ten million, five thirty five. You guys have already talked a little bit about sewer and stormwater improvements. You've got two million dollars in parks and recreation improvements as well. Neither, neither one of those impact the general fund, the city's main operating fund. So if you back out all of the capital for twenty twenty one, your capital improvement plan, you're really talking about just over a three and a half percent increase in your operating budget. The general fund itself has about one point one million in CIP. Obviously, we live and work in a unusual time here with COVID being a big part of the daily conversation and decision-making across the country and including, you know, the recent change here tonight. I was prepared, as you can see, to come out to City Hall and, or the community center and do the presentation. But given that, you typically see you're going to entertain a budget throughout early fall, August, August and then September, October. We decided to make a little bit of a change in order to see more about or actually forecast, get a better forecast as what twenty twenty one might look like, given the, what I call the lockdown recession had, had taken place. So August, we kicked off the budget, but that didn't come back to you guys until October. Between that time, city administration and finance met with departments over a few weeks. Obviously, to get more in touch with what their priorities were and what their, what their gotta haves are. So we come back and give you a presentation of what those were in October with a couple of workshops, including one, obviously, this last meeting in November. Those increases or those, those additions to this budget included six positions. Only one of them has a general fund impact and then it's a partial one at that. And that include that it would be the IT position. Jeremy's taking a, doing triple duty really on what he's been working on with his position as administrative services. This IT position would actually help us enhance the cybersecurity more critical than ever because everybody's remote anymore. There's a large number of projects, obviously, I mentioned already, within water, sewer, stormwater fund that's associated with the COP that will be coming back to you guys for approval after sale. The Parks and Recreation Fund has capital improvements, fairly significant amount of capital improvements that are really required for safety purposes. And then, well, safety purposes and then equipment such as HVAC, just like critical, critical needs. We talked a little bit about the Parks and Recreation Fund. The Parks Fund, the Aquatic Fund and the Community Center, having all rolled up. If you look at them all to one, with the bonds, the twenty twelve bonds paying off in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three has a very positive outlook for that fund. And that's one of the reasons we can move forward with that capital and not rely on the general fund for that capital itself. The last one is EMS, the capital projects for health and safety issues as well, such as the ventilation system and, and, and commercial washer and dryer for what they're using now is just not going to, it's not, it's not working. Obviously, within all of these funds, there were far more requests that were made. But with the departments, we were able to whittle down to just what the critical needs were. We had also talked about a couple other, well, each of the other workshops, how the MS fund is one of our priorities for twenty twenty one to solve for sustainable, for sustainability within the EMS fund itself. As it can't continue to rely, reasonably rely on the general fund for any kind of transfers within, within a twelve to twenty four month period. As I mentioned before, we're in the unusual times, even with the identified critical improvements in this budget. September, October, which means June and July sales tax, or we're above, came in above twenty nineteen. We don't know what's going to happen in twenty twenty one because we've never been there, just like in two thousand eight when the housing recession hit. We'd never been there before. It's unprecedented time. Luckily, Harrisonville and a number of cities of similar size and a similar location saw the similar impact or the sales tax wasn't really, it didn't decrease as much as some of those that rely on the entertainment industry or the dining industry or for that man, tourism. Even though Harrisonville is fairly insulated, I would say. My advice to the finance team and Brad is still similar to what I gave whenever we, I started working with Harrisonville. And that's to be very cautious and weigh any of these increases, any of them, across the board against the health of each one of those funds. We've had a water sewer study done, the electric funds also had a, 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 a study done. Each one of those funds, I think, in fairly good condition based on what you guys have been able to do in the past. It's really going to be the, the general fund and a couple others that we really need to watch moving forward. So even though the, the replacements of the, the, the new information, the new items tonight that we're asking for approval are, would be in place, they aren't automatic purchased. They're not something we can go out and automatically do. Because of that environment that we're not, we have never been in, I think we need to continue to look at our financial situation in that frame, next steps back in, in February. And I said, coming in February, I would say, I'd like to come back to review the preliminary year-end results of twenty twenty and see if any of those make changes to our forecast for twenty twenty one. And that would be in the early part of February, based on December results, obviously unaudited because that would come later in the year. But that would continue our, our conversation down into twenty twenty one as far as routine financial updates back to you guys and back to this, back to staff. Primarily, primarily budget to actual results on a monthly basis. I'm kind of curious as to how we see twenty twenty one shape out or play out based on any kind of changes, not just the state of Missouri, but Cass County and the city have in store. Hopefully, all of this is behind us and we see a new normal that includes revenue being stable and continuing in the future. That's what I see right now. My caution is really what we can't see in the future. So with that, I do want to show appreciation for the department heads who were very patient as we went through this process. I want to commend Jeremy and Kim for walking through this project process, very brand-new process for them. They put in a tremendous effort and I think I've learned a lot from them and vice versa. So kudos to, to all three of those groups. Mayor, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions from the board for either Mr. Hart or Mr. Ratliff, who's also on the call?
Yes, Mayor, I have a comment, please.
Okay, Alderman.
Ben, what you just said at the very end is what concerns me. It's what you can't see.
That's right.
And I, I didn't actually necessarily realize that we were going last meeting that we were going to finalize things this meeting. And it concerns me when we're showing expenses of one point two million more than revenues. And I know some of those can be explained. You explained some of it just as you were talking. But we've also, there's other items in the budget that, we're not going into specifics right now. I do believe that we need to consider going through this budget a little bit more from the, from an Alderman standpoint and seeing what we can cut and whittle down and reduce that difference between revenues and expenses. Because of just what you said, we can't, we can't see what we've got. We can always amend the budget next year at some point in time. But I'm one that would rather have revenues more than expenses, probably as you as well, Ben. That may not be the case, but we can ensure, I believe, work in, work in a fashion to look through it with the department heads. Because I would like to propose that we have a, a meeting before the next meeting and work session so we can go through these, the budget item by item or somewhat bottom by item. That'd be a little, the way I would look at it, so we can look at positions that have been added to this budget and see if maybe they are a, a demand need right now or if it's something we can put off until maybe sometime next year and once we see where COVID is going to take us. So with that, thank you, Mayor, for the, for the time. But I would suggest that we not complete a vote on this, this meeting, that we have a work session in between now and the next meeting and then finalize it at the next meeting.
I appreciate Mr. Hart's comments about wanting to proceed with caution because these are certainly unknown and unexperienced times. I do want to remind the board that Mr. Hart did also point out that just because the things are in the budget does not give carte blanche for spending the funds. And things can be removed based on current conditions. So, Mr. Ratliff, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, I would say that if the board would move forward on the budget that for those positions that are any concern, you know, my, my philosophy is kind of wait and see how conditions are before we actually, you know, hire a position or move forward on a certain project, just to do a more reserved approach to it. There is no doubt that there are some positions that are going to be greater need than other positions. And on the staff level, department head level, we went around on those levels quite a bit. For, for instance, we can use EMS as an example. There is no doubt that Chief Myler can tell you he needs help. He needs not just more staff-wise, but he would like to at least have another battalion chief. But due to the amount of deficit that EMS runs, we couldn't feel how we could fit that in there and be able to continue the general fund making up that behalf. And so as a result of that, what we're trying to accomplish is we need something, the EMS, there's no, you can't cut your way down in EMS to do away with the deficit that they're seeing at over seven hundred thousand dollars. They don't have enough in their budget to cut to get down to that level. But there needs to be something approached in that, in that number. We, we know the park situation, as Ben pointed out, is going to remedy itself in twenty twenty two is when their last payment is. And so the need for transfer from the general fund is not going to be needed. But the EMS is definitely a, a more serious subject that we're going to have to have discussions about over this next year. Because I think between now and next year's budget, it's going to be more than just a work session. It's going to be more than just a couple of work sessions. I think it's going to be several meetings across the year with the board on deciding the best path forward on meeting that, that deficit in EMS. But I, I don't feel until, now, this is just me unless the board tells me, no, we don't. You know, I, I have this discussion with department heads a lot over my career. When the budget's passed, a magic fairy doesn't come at the beginning of the fiscal year and drop the amount of money at the beginning of the year and you get to spend it. I've used my wife for an example. She doesn't like paying attention to anything in government. And so when the, when the recession happened, she made a comment to me, why are these cities having all this hard time? Because, you know, they, they get their money and they just have to cut back on their money. And I said, so do you think that the money all comes at the very beginning of the year? And then we decide, and she goes, yeah, isn't that the way it happens? And I said, no, you know, it's, it's essentially each month. the way it happens? And I said, no, you know, it's, it's essentially each month, looking at the crystal ball of the trend and seeing how things are trending. And so because of what's going on right now with COVID and because of what's going on right now, even with the the look at the possible direction of our federal government and the change that's happening there, I'm, I'm going to be real reluctant to move forward on any of those positions or any of those new initiatives until we see exactly how those come in. Of course, we would be keeping the board abreast of that with the financials. And now that you all have your new Chromebooks and Jeremy would, that'd be one of his arguments for another IT person and we can get drop boxes put on there and your financials would just be dropping in there. So you could see them continually, you see him kind of smirking there because that's what he would say. That's, that's the kind of information and especially we're going to be a much more, every city's looking at technology. And I mean, our meeting tonight, I think we're going to have more meetings like this. I think there's going to be a more of a need, even without COVID. I think there's going to be more utilization of, of these type of, of softwares and needs. So I, I agree with you, Madam Mayor. You know, it's, it's, I've, I've never worked for a governing body that told me go out and spend. And so we'll be very reluctant at how we go at it. And over the, and, and I don't, I don't have a problem going through additional information even as of next year, you know, if we, we might have to come back to you and say, look, numbers are, are going down further than we thought and we need to amend the budget and back in more areas. I mean, the budget is a living, breathing document.
Then I've got one thing to add, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Hart.
Just, I want to just respect Alderman Davidson's question and, and the intention you have also is justified. The, I just want to clarify, he had mentioned that there's revenues 1.1 million under expense, expenses, and that's exactly right. The bulk of that revenue under, over, under, I'm sorry, the revenue under expenses is within the EMS fund. There are times when you do overspend revenue and that's when you have savings accounts that are set up for that very purpose. For example, on the debt service fund, the bond and interest fund, there's around 300,000 sitting in there that only handles the 2012 bond issue. So there's two more payments there. So we've dropped that, we've, we've are allowing ourselves to spend into that savings because at the end of that 2012 payoff, that savings account won't be needed anymore. So what we're doing is allowing us to, allowing ourselves to dip into that savings because it's eventually going to go away in the very near future. The general fund is one of the, one of the bigger operating funds. It's got to be balanced to a certain degree. You've got 60% fund balance left in that fund. And I can honestly say, having met with rating agencies on a regular basis as part of my, my day job, fund balance is a big, big item to be watching along with liquidity. Now you guys have done a fantastic job in the past on the general fund, maintaining that fund balance. So within even making the transfers to the parks and to the EMS, you're still sitting on 60% fund balance, which is on a fantastic level to be sitting in. My concern throughout this entire process has really been on the EMS. Like I said, I think water sewer has got a small deficit in there. I don't think that, I mean, in a blink of an eye, that's going to go away. Electric is balanced. Everything else is balanced is really coming down to what Brad said. It was the EMS. And like you said, this is something that's going to be easy to be solving. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Other questions?
Just one more response, Mayor, if I may.
Certainly.
And I, and I understand where you're coming from. I'm not, I'm not disputing that. I just feel like that there is, the requirement is that, that the budget is, is approved by next meeting. That's three weeks from now. Actually, I was thinking it was two and I just looked at my computer, it's on my phone, my calendar, it's three. There's no demand to get it done tonight. That's the reason I would like to spend a little more time looking at it and discussing it with the city administrator and also being able to, being able to look at it like we have in the past and line, line by line type of the situation. So that's all I've got to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Do you want to make a motion then, Alderman Davidson? I'm sorry, Alderman Milner, just one moment.
If, if, if this isn't something that absolutely has to go through tonight, I think I'm going to have to agree with Alderman Davidson. I would, you know, in the past, and I guess this is just old habit maybe kicking in. I, there were a couple of things I had some questions on too, that I wouldn't mind. And I, I honestly did like that if there was a possibility, we could do a work session with department heads and kind of go through this stuff. You know, a lot of times we get more clarity when we hear them talking and they can identify specifics for us in certain things. Rodney being the perfect example can tell us exactly why he needs $400 million to fix our street tickers whenever we're going to have to have. So but you know, sometimes it's just nice to hear from the department heads as the Alderman's sitting there, as we have in the past with specifics. And, and if this doesn't have to be done tonight and we could work in a work session, I think I would maybe have to agree on that one.
Mayor.
Yes, Alderman.
This Alderman Dickerson, and you all know, are aware, I'm trying to learn the computer. I don't even have a copy of our, our budget to examine. And so I would appreciate the, what Marcy and the other Alderman were saying, I think I'm in agreement if we could wait because I would like to read some of it. I don't have Wi-Fi, so I can't access the information on my computer, plus the fact I'm not working it very good.
Mr. Smith, did you not download documents onto Alderman Dickerson's computer for him?
Yes, he did, but I, I messed it up and I can't, I can't, I've already messed the thing up, so.
Okay, so you do have the document, you just can't.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, yes, that's what I want to say. It's on the computer, but I just can't work it. So I'll have to come back up and have him show it to me again. They didn't really have time today. They were busy doing a lot of things.
All right. Well, we'll see that you get that straightened out then.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we've had one reading, Mr. Felson, of this ordinance.
Correct. Yeah, there's been one reading, so we could move to suspend so I can read it again, or if they count, or if the Alderman would like to make a separate motion.
Can, can the first reading be approved with the second reading for the next meeting in December, Alex, for the second reading?
Yeah, that, yeah, I'll, I'll check with Steve, but if not, then we would just do two readings in December if that didn't work.
So this would be the first reading tonight and we would do the second reading at the next meeting.
Correct.
Right, correct.
And if there was any amendments that we wanted to make prior to or after the second reading and prior to vote, that we could do that. Is that correct, Alex?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have any more action that we need to do on this tonight. We've read it one time.
Correct. If we'd like to do, just like we did with the B and B theaters resolution and just leave it there, then it can just stay there. Or, I'm sorry, I need to amend.
They need to approve the first reading and then move that the second reading be at the December meeting.
Thank you. That's what I was going to say. Yes, Mr. Ratliff is correct.
Thank you. All right. So we need to have a roll call vote here and what we're doing is approving the first reading and the fact that we're going to hold the second reading over to our next meeting on December 7th. Is that correct? Did I state that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, then we can have a roll call, please.
Alex, correct me if I'm wrong here. Would we need a motion first?
Motion and a second.
I think we had, I'm sorry, I think we had a motion from Alderman Davidson and perhaps Alderman Milner, did I understand yours to be the second then?
I, yes, I would agree to that, yes.
Okay, so the motion is from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Milner that we accept the first reading of the budget for 2021 and we hold it over to the next meeting of December 7th for its second reading.
All right. My apologies there.
Now I'll take a roll call.
All right. Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
And Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to Council Bill 81.
A resolution of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville to allow the mayor to appoint three board members to a committee to investigate allegations against a member of the Board of Aldermen.
Okay, so at our last meeting on November 2nd, the motion was made and seconded and passed by a vote of six to one requesting the mayor to appoint a committee to investigate alleged violations of city code and code of ethics by Alderman David Dickerson. According to section 110 dot 170 subsection B, I am hereby bringing the appointments of Alderman Dave Dorhoff, Alderwoman Marcy Milner and Alderman Mike Zaring to you as that appointed committee. I would entertain a motion.
A motion to approve.
And I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Milner to accept the appointments of Alderman Dorhoff, Milner and Zaring to the investigative committee. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
No.
Alderman Reese.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
And Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Thank you. And now according again to section 110 dots, 170 subsection B, I'd like to ask the three members of that committee to elect their chairperson.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to appoint Alderman Zaring as the chairman of that committee.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. So Mr. Zaring, you are the chairperson of the investigative committee. Thank you, Board of Aldermen and Committee Reports. I'm sorry, need to name that resolution as R041. And now Alderman and Committee Reports. Alderman Dorhoff.
I have nothing.
Thank you. Alderman Zaring.
Madam Mayor, Board, I'd like to start off tonight. I actually misspoke at the last meeting and wanted to correct that here publicly with everybody. I'd actually named Alderman Turner last week or in their, at our last session that he had initiated the motion to move Council Bill 71 to a second reading when in fact he did not. He was not the one that initiated that nor seconded that, although he voted to pass it and move it to a second reading. He was not the one that initiated that. With that, I would like to extend another congratulations to Rodney Jacobs, 45 years of service. That's, that's quite a long time and you know, in any position, but yet alone for a, for your city. So again, congratulations, great job and we appreciate you.
Alderman Reese.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Alderman Milner.
I do, I would, I, I agree with Alderman Zaring. I would like to congratulate Rodney. I don't, I, I hope everyone in our community realizes what a treasure he is and hopefully he's not planning on going anywhere anytime soon because we won't know what to do without him. But Rodney, thank you so very much for all the years of hard work and service. You are the one person that I can say every community member probably knows that if something goes wrong, they don't really know who to call, but they're probably going to call you and then you're going to tell them which way to go. So for that, we are so, so greatly appreciated and, and I know we've had staff who have been caught up in the little COVID ugliness that there is out there and, and just want to extend my wishes that everybody gets well soon and hopefully we can kind of contain this and be on the road back into recovery.
I agree. So Mr. Jacobs, if you're still on the call, you can tell your family what a treasure you are. All right, Alderman Miller.
I have nothing tonight.
Alderman Dickerson.
No, nothing.
Alderman Turner.
I have a few things from the Park Board. Our membership's down this year from same time last year, we're down about 400 people. I think COVID has a lot to do with it and stuff, so we gotta try to get them back. We had the HVAC fire, which closed the indoor pool for about a week. It was the end of October. Then they've got it working now. They got the new one ordered with the short-term bombs that we approved. It takes about 30 weeks to build, so hopefully this will last till we, till we get that one. The Midwest pools have now taken over the management and lifeguard duties of the pool. And so now it's all third party. So that'd be a little weight off our shoulders. They were discussing the possibility of adding some fitness on demand to some fitness equipment as a way to help get more people in and keep them motivated. And they're looking at replacing the carpet with rubber flooring. Doing so should help reduce the noise from the weights dropping on the floors and, and make it a little quieter for everybody. Then also with all the work that's going to be required for the outdoor pool, there could be a delay in getting it open at the beginning of the season. A lot of it depends on the weather this winter. And if it's a mild winter, they should be able to be on track and open it when we normally do. But if it's real bad or whatever, we could actually see a small delay in getting it open, but they will be doing it as much as fast as possible. Also, as a way to try to help boost our membership, they approved at the last Park Board meeting to, we're going to have seven community center free days. They're going to coincide with the city's seven holidays that the community center is open. So those seven days, people in the community will be able to go to the community center, try it out to, and see if they like it or not, you know? So I mean, that's a good way. And then they've added some mulch to a lot of playground equipment, Lord's Park and Shelter 7 and out the ball fields. So that's all I have for the Park Board.
Things have been busy at the Park Board, haven't they?
They've been busy.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davidson.
Again, I would like to give my congratulations to Rodney and thank him for his years of service. I don't see very many people that commit so much time of their life to a job, especially at one job with one, with the city. So again, I would like to congratulate him and thank you again, Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. Mr. Ratliff, your report?
Well, as some of you can tell, I'm in a secret bunker location that the mayor took, put me in.
I was going to comment earlier, but I just had, I just couldn't.
Well, I am, I'm unfortunately COVID positive. But as you can tell by probably looking at me, I'm not really have, I have a lot of symptoms. It's more like, to me, like a little bit of a head cold, but my, my son decided to share that with me, that he got from school. And so I am on isolation, at least hopefully till Sunday is my last day and then Monday I'm supposed to be free from my isolation point, according to the Health Department. We, with that, we, I am one of several, we've had COVID hitting several departments throughout the city. The police department has been hit pretty hard, EMS, Public Works. We've had, of course, in the admin, the mayor thankfully. We've had, of course, in the admin, the mayor thankfully was in discussions with me right before a lot of this started to start requiring masks for people that are coming into city hall or any of city, any of our city buildings as well as staff in doing, in doing so. So we are going to continue to do the best we can to meet the needs of the community and meet the service requirements. But there may be times that we're doing more technology and driving Jeremy a little more crazy with all the stuff that we need to be able to function. So if you, if, if anything comes up and we're a little bit slow on it, that may be what's going on with that. But then my wife decided to need to go to the ER and I'm the only strong enough person to get her there. So I'm in St. Luke's parking lot as I'm talking to you all, as I'm isolating. And hopefully she'll be out here sometime in the near future. The we still have with the street department, I'd like to also commend Rodney for his 45 years. It's very rare that I've had someone get up to 45 years. The last person was 41 years that I worked with. And I remember asking Rodney one time about it and he said, it's, it's not a job when you enjoy it. And if anyone has ever been around Rodney, he definitely eludes the enjoyment of working on behalf of the community. So we are thankful for that. We are waiting on MODOT's permit for the radius change on the Bird Street for installing that flashing pedestrian sign on East South Street. So we haven't forgot about that. We're just waiting on MODOT's permit. We do have a new date from K and J remodeling for curb and sidewalk replacement. This is like the second pushback. We're now back to the week of November 30th. So hopefully the weather cooperates and we'll see some of those curb and sidewalk replacements move forward from that. The UV disinfection and the south lift station project are moving forward quickly. Letters are going out to property owners. I know we've, Carl's been getting some responses from people and we've been trying to talk to them as well. And so hopefully we'll get the finalization of alignment. Once a lot of the alignment and exact locations are completed, we will make sure that that's in a staff report to you all so that you know exactly where all of that is going as well. Mark SDP Committee, we are one project, the Covert Over the Muddy Creek Tributary is at the 79 points. There's four recommendations on funding right now. Two of those recommendations of the four include Harrisonville in that funding. So we're still hopeful for that and have a meeting coming up again, I believe around the, the first of December on that. And so hopefully we'll be able to report back to you some, some funds that we received on that. The police department shower and changing room has been completed. I know that we were wanting to give opportunity for everyone to go through between 5:00 and 5:45 tonight, but a lot of not being able to do that because of COVID. And so if you'd like to schedule a time with the chief to go through that, that would probably be the best thing to do because we're kind of limited on gatherings that we can do right now. And then with those, those staffing COVID changes, we'll continue to update the board on those changes. Some other good points, well, before I go to that, we did go out for an RFP for an audit for our new auditor and we received two submissions. And so the December 7th meeting, we will be bringing forward the selection of the next contract for the city audit work. Then we've had RFPs come in for 301 East Washington Street and the demolition for that that the city is moving forward with. And hopefully we can start by late November and be completed by mid-December. Again, if weather holding to get that project completed. We did, the developer at Katy Trail subdivision is, is also issued a building permits or a building permit out there off of Chrissy Bend. They, we've had permits have come in for a new expansion alteration for the school district. They are doing some remodeling and expansion of the Crass Career Center. So we're happy to hear about that and see that. We also have been seeing a continuation in permits and I think if, if one of the things that I had told Chris Arthur that I really enjoyed in those weekly reports, a lot of times people don't realize the amount of permits that the staff are doing with the commercial permits, with the housing permits, but to date that they've issued enough permits for the construction evaluation of $9,160,523. So almost, almost $9.2 million that our, our building officials have done in permits for the community. And people would say, well, why is that important? Well, that valuation goes for the city when we do our bonding capacities, when we do our financials, when we do our financial outlook and when people are looking at communities, they're looking at that valuation and construction. It's not always just the amount of permits. It's also the value of that construction. And so we're seeing that and move forward. We're at also the place, and speaking of that, where Aldi's is now talking to us about pulling their permit. That'll add to that number. These couple of other retailers that hopefully will get us to the place where we can announce on that will also affect that year-end number as well. And so we're doing a lot of, we're seeing a lot of movement and a lot of activities when it comes to the permits and the construction. And if anything, I would say for next year is a good motto for Harrisonville is watch the dirt turn. With that, Madam Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Ratliff. Mr. Minnick, questions from the media? You're muted, Dennis. You're still muted.
How about there?
That's perfect.
There we go. No, I have no questions, but I do, do wish Mr. Radliff the best. I know what he's going through.
Yes, you do. Firsthand experience. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
I have just a couple of things this evening. I wanted to share with the board. At the last meeting, I shared a letter that we received from the City of Alexandria for our electric department. And I just wanted to let you know that I received another letter, this one from the mayor of the City of Alexandria. I have shared this with Mr. Pollard, who I see is on the call. Just another letter, just appreciating our electric department for the mutual aid that we provided during the storm in Alexandria. So Mr. Pollard, again, a thank you to you and to your staff for representing us so very well. And the other thing I want to share with the board, because we're all out in the community and we all have our own circles of influence. You know, I, you're familiar that last week I implemented a directive that masks would be, be worn by employees in city hall and in city buildings and by anyone who had business to do or transactions within a city building. I did that in response to a call that I was on with the chief medical officers of the metro area hospitals. Following that, a plea was made by the health department directors of six of our area surrounding counties about the increase in the COVID numbers and the fact that our area hospitals are now overwhelmed with COVID patients to the degree that in the very near future, our own local hospitals, you know, are no longer going to be able to send COVID patients to metro hospitals. So I think the, the rise in the COVID numbers, I was just looking today, we're at 3,068 in Cass County. Last week was the highest number since March, when this all started. Last week we had 372 positive cases. Today we had 50 new cases. So far, that's 110 for this week. So the COVID cases are really on the increase and the hospital medical officers and physicians are saying, you know, please be more aggressive in the precautions that you take. Wear a mask everywhere outside of your house and be more cautious about the gatherings that you, that you, that you participate in with other people. And, and remember the social distancing and washing your hands because if we don't do something soon, they won't be able to render care for other conditions, other non-COVID conditions. So it's, it's time that we step up, you know, our, the precautions that we're taking. And the good news is I've heard just today that, you know, there are a couple of different vaccines that are almost ready to be released. Pfizer is making one. Moderna is making one. And if we can just hold off this thing for just a few weeks until vaccines are available, you know, we may be able to, to, to make some real progress. So I just encourage you, you know, in your own circles of influence and people that you deal with, just please ask them, you know, the hospitals are imploring and pleading us to help them out by, you know, stepping up the precautions that we take. So it's not a mask mandate, but it's certainly a request for, for you to wear your mask and encourage other people to do the same thing. That's all I have. I want to entertain a motion to adjourn and then after we do that, we'll take a brief five-minute break and come back for work sessions. So I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Zerring, all in favor of adjourning.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. We're adjourned.